This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2018, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 3rd, 2018. And it has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphones. And assistive listening devices are available. Rebecca, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Mayor Burrell Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Borough Administrator?
Here.
Okay. I'm delighted to see Rebecca Hirsch, our representative from Main Street here tonight with her able-bodied assistant.
Hi, Sam.
And she's here tonight to give us our Main Street Minute and Small Business Weekend discussion.
I wrote a few things down so I don't forget. Can you guys tell me?
You gotta go close, but yeah.
Okay. So, there's been a lot going on. The fall is always overwhelming. We started off with the, our biggest, biggest, most heavily attended and most number of vendors and artists, Arts in the Park, in late September. It was our best one to date. It just gets bigger every year. We're thinking like, how can we make it bigger next year? We're gonna have to like expand onto side streets or something, I don't know. Just clear that with the police department first. But, yeah, so, you know, that's going like gangbusters. Right after that was the, another successful townwide garage sale, which is a Century 21 project, but we helped them with it. We get the downtown businesses involved and it's a really, it's a really cool project that, you know, that showcases our town every year. Right after that, we had the, our third annual Taste of Highland Park event. Again, it was our biggest one so far. That's where we, we partner with Pinos for their Harvest Festival Block Party and we get local restaurants, we get Highland Park restaurants to participate. And they all set up tables and then they hand out tastes of their various cuisines and it's a great promotional event for the restaurants. The restaurants were really happy this year. They made a lot of money and it worked out really well. So, we've also, this fall, in the past few weeks, we've had two festivals at the farmer's market. The first annual, the first ever Health and Wellness Festival. We got a lot of health and wellness businesses involved from around town, the gyms and the massage studios and St. Peter's Hospital, which is the title sponsor of the farmer's market. It was, they came with blood pressure screenings and blood sugar screenings. So, that was, that was a really successful event. And then we also had our second annual squash festival just last week. So, and that's, that's an event where we had tomatoes, I mean, not tomatoes, we had pumpkins and pumpkin painting and it was really fun and the farmers really liked that event. What else? We had another successful Halloween trick-or-treating event and we did our, we added an element to it and the businesses love that event because it gets people into their stores, even if they're just trick-or-treating. It gets, it's a great way to reach the parents, you know, they hand out coupons to the parents when they give a piece of candy to the kids and the businesses love that. And we added an element this year, a dog costume parade, which was really cute and it was much more successful than we thought. And we gave out awards, we partnered with Nylabone and we had some local celebrity, local dog-friendly celebrities, be the judges, Albie Connolly and John Crocco, who runs a dog walking business. So, we're gonna, we're gonna keep doing that. People really like to dress up their dogs, apparently.
I was there too. I enjoyed it. I enjoyed it too.
You had the Donald Trump dog, right?
Yeah.
Yes, that's right. That was hilarious.
A lot of work goes into it.
Um, sorry. Well, yeah.
Appropriate.
We are, oh, and this year, for the first time, we handed out the tote bags for the Halloween trick-or-treaters, but we stuffed them with promotional materials from businesses around town. And that's something we're really gonna try to do more of because the businesses really like that. We give out the bags to everyone and it's a really good way to reach customers. It's an affordable advertising method for them. And along those lines, we're doing it again with bigger bags for Small Business Weekend, Shop Small Bags. We're making our own and it's, you know, I feel like it's a good way to get off on the right foot with the plastic bag ban coming down the pipeline. We're gonna, we're gonna get 2,000 bags made up and we're gonna stuff them with promotional materials for businesses all over town and hand them out over Small Business Weekend, which is November 24th and 25th. We're planning a lot of stuff for that weekend, not just the bags, but we're having caroling around town, live music on various corners, we're having a movie, we're having an arts and crafts slash flea market, we're having the tree lighting on Saturday, we're having some food vendors.
Don't you have a new store opening right next door?
Yep, that's the last one, last thing on my list. And the Cook and the Carpenter Bake Shop, which is right next to the Main Street office, they're having their grand opening party right before the tree lighting. Tree lighting is at 6:00 PM on Saturday, the 24th. So, we're gonna do a little ribbon cutting at like 5:45 because we wanna capture the crowd that's there. And they're gonna have treats, they're gonna be open, it's gonna be, it's gonna be really great. Their food is amazing and it's really problematic that they're right next to my office. She keeps bringing me.
Samples?
I'm like, no, no, no. Cabelli Cafe, she keeps telling me she's opening soon, that's right next to the bridge. She's having problems, she was having problems with her contractor and I think she's in good shape now, but she had some delays. There's another Venezuelan restaurant opening up called Mary Restaurant, which is in the former Jack's Hardware space. Yes. I don't know what their timeline is right now, but they keep saying soon. Chamber 43 is not closing, they are moving. I can't tell you where yet. I know where, but they don't want me to tell. But if, they're not, they're moving and they're staying downtown. So, so I, they just wanted to wait till they sign the lease, which I think is any day now.
Right.
We are, in the design committee downstairs just now, we were working on a map to map out locations for where we would like to put new benches and trashcans and we will spend the block grant money before the end of the year on benches and trashcans. And we're looking specifically at a number of locations on Woodbridge Avenue. We are buying new string lights for the poles downtown. They're a couple of years old and they've burned out, a lot of them have burned out. And so, we're buying more. We would like to put string lights on Woodbridge Avenue poles also, but those poles don't have, they're all the old wooden poles and they don't have power outlets. So, it's a problem. We're investigating some solar panel string lights, but apparently they're all really bad quality, so we're working on it, but it's, it's, it's an issue. We're doing more research. Anything else? The snowflake lights are gonna be installed the week before Thanksgiving. And we're starting up a mural program where we're working with property owners with nice walls on the sides of their buildings and seeing, you know, if they would let a local artist, partnering them with local artists to do some murals and continue to brand Highland Park as the artsy funky town that we all know it is. Anyway, that's it for now.
Well, it seems like you've been very busy.
Oh, and the Hanukkah, the menorah lighting is on the first night of Hanukkah, Sunday, December 2nd, at 5 o'clock.
Okay, great. Thank you, Rebecca.
All right, thank you.
And before you go too far, we have a proclamation
Oh, right, I forgot.
...that I'd like to read to you.
Thank you.
In honor of our Small Business Weekend.
Yes, awesome. Thank you so much.
Rebecca and Main Street, whereas the Borough of Highland Park celebrates our small businesses and the contribution they make to our locally economy and community, and whereas the citizens of the Borough of Highland Park
Let me take a few moments, please.
...and the area support their local businesses and recognize that such local businesses create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas the Borough of Highland Park supports local businesses by, among other things, initiatives and activities, having downtown events and partnering with Main Street Highland Park, and whereas the Borough of Highland Park joins with other municipalities in New Jersey and across the nation in recognizing the importance of local businesses, now therefore I, Gail Burrell Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, on behalf of the Highland Park Borough Council, our residents of Highland Park, do here, brought by proclaim November 24th and November 25th of 2018, a Small Business Weekend. And we urge all the citizens of Highland Park, our regional community, and other communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Weekend and throughout the year. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you so much. That's great. Can I have a?
Yeah. Okay. Is Franco here tonight?
Uh-uh.
No. Okay. We have a very committed Highland Park resident who, year after year, gives more than his share to our community. He is a survivor of pancreatic cancer and each year we give a proclamation for World Pancreatic Cancer Day because of him. And I won't read you the entire proclamation, but I will read you some highlights. In 2018, an estimated 55,440 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States and 44,330 will die from the disease. Pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the third leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and it is projected to become the second leading cause around 2020. Whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents of Highland Park are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about the symptoms and risks and factors of pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments, I am now declaring that World Pancreatic Cancer Day will be observed here in Highland Park on November 15th, 2018. Okay, let's do some council reports. Councilwoman Foster Dublin, would you like to start us off?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Operation Take Back was this past weekend and the National Drug Take Back sponsorship by the DEA was held on the 27th and the 28th of October and they collected 130 pounds of unused medication and it was turned over for proper disposal. Highland Park also was awarded $1,822.18 in state grant for, grant for drunk driving enforcement, which will increase the amount of patrols that target people, that target individuals who are driving under the influence during the holiday season. So, that was one good grant that we got, happy about that. And just to remind everyone, don't drink and drive and just think about the safety of everyone else. On our police blotter, I'm just gonna run through the list of how did we do? We had a, we had 67 ambulance calls, six assault, one burglary, one burglary M D V, nine N C Ds, we had C S Ds, we had two criminal mischief complaints, we had two disorderly persons, two, we had 12 dispute, 14 harassment, missing person, we had one, motor vehicle accidents, unfortunately 35, Narcan deployment, one, shoplifting, four, theft, seven, trespassing, one, welfare adult check was 28, and total arrests was 15, and we issued, the police department issued 15 warrants. With that said, I would just like to take a moment to think about all the horrible stuff that has been happening in our country as we see more and more violence, not only in our houses of worship, but in our, we not only see them in the schools, but we start seeing them in our houses of worship where people are being gunned down. And as it pertained to keeping us all safe, we had an opportunity to, the mayor will talk some more about this, to talk with some folks from Homeland Security, with all the leaders from the houses of worship. This past Monday, last Tuesday, I should say, and we were able to get some understanding, get some information put together and we're gonna be working on how do we keep all our houses of worship safe. That being said, the New Jersey N J S has a resolution that they're putting forth towards the governor and it's a legislation that, Senate Bill Number S 3080 by Senator Laguna and Gopal. And the accompanying bill is an Assembly Bill A 4597 by Chair Swain and Tully. And what this does is about keeping everyone safe. It's a security bill for non-public schools, which includes schools such as Catholic schools, Jewish schools, Muslim school, Christian Seventh-day Adventist schools, and other schools that are dedicate, that are houses of worship schools. What this bill does is that it's calling for an increase in security for all schools. Currently, in the public school, they receive $75 per child for security during, during the year to keep everyone safe. We wanna see this put together to spread across all schools, that there's no separation of private school, public schools. So, we're, the legislature is putting this Senate bill together and the Assembly Bill and they want, they're requesting that the governor sign off on this bill, that will keep every non-public school student safe as with public schools. So, I'm encouraging, we're gonna be discussing this more in our public safety meeting, but I think it was really important that we address this and I'm gonna be asking for my council colleague for their support with this bill going forward. Thank you, Mayor, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Fine?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I wanna congratulate my colleagues, council member and past council president Welkowitz, council member Kim Cho Han, and council member Hale on being re-elected by the voters of Highland Park yesterday to continue to serve on this Borough Council. I look forward to working with each of them to continue exploring ways to stabilize property taxes, encourage mixed-use development in downtown Highland Park, protect our environment and the general health, safety, and welfare of our residents. As the Chair of the Council's Finance Committee, I serve as a liaison to the Highland Parks, to Highland Parks Municipal Ethics Board, which is governed under Section 2-42.1 of the ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park. Highland Park's municipal ethics boards' powers include initiating, receiving, hearing, and reviewing complaints, and holding hearings with regards to possible violations of the municipal code of ethics or financial disclosure requirements by local government officers or employees serving the municipality. The Ethics Board may issue subpoenas for the production of documents and the attendance of witnesses with respect to its investigation of any complaint or to the holding of a hearing. It may also render advisory opinions to local government officers or employees serving the municipality as to whether a given set of facts and circumstances would constitute a violation of any provision of the municipal code of ethics or financial disclosure requirements. Now, this Section 2-42.1 of the ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park provides that the municipal ethics board is to be made up of six members and that no more than three members shall be of the same political party. We have had two vacancies on the municipal ethics board. The four filled seats on the ethics board include two Democrats and two Republicans. I'm glad to announce that on the council's agenda this evening is the appointment of Chris Rasmussen, a longtime H P resident, former leader within the Highland Park Democratic Municipal Committee, and an Associate Professor of History at Fairleigh Dickinson University, to fill one of the vacant seats on the ethics board. So, for all non-Democrats in Highland Park, please note that we are still looking to fill a vacant seat on the ethics board. If you are interested in serving on the municipal ethics board, please fill out a volunteer application, which may be found on our website, or at the Borough Clerk's Office, and submit it to the Borough Clerk for the Mayor to consider. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I'm also liaison to the Highland Park Free Public Library, which is a separate entity from the Borough of Highland Park. The Library Board of Trustees generally meets on the fourth Monday of each month at 7:30 in the conference meeting room in the back of the library. The Library Board of Trustees meetings are open to the public. In 2018, a total of $448,713.63 was appropriated to the library in the Highland Park municipal budget based on a statutory formula. However, the Borough Council, as it has in past years, provided more than double the amount of money to the library than it is statutorily required to be given. So, in addition to the $448,713.63 that we were required to provide the library, in our 2018 budget, the Borough Council's adopted budget included an additional $560,084.15 for the library, so that we appropriated a total of $1,008,797.78 to the library this year. Like with all other departments, we will be engaging in budget discussions with the library for 2019 in the near future. The next Library Board of Trustees meeting will take place at the library at 7:30 PM on Monday night, November 26th. That's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few quick things. I do want to remind everyone that this Sunday is Veterans Day and through our community center, the Veterans Day Parade will take place and will begin at 11:00 AM at the Doughboy Statue in Highland Park and proceed along Raritan Avenue and over the bridge into New Brunswick. So, please come out and show your support and thank the veterans for their service. Last night, I did join the mayor briefly at the celebration that Zone 6 for the first time voters and joined her mayor's, is it Teen Advisory Council? Okay, Teen Advisory Council. It was, it was very, it was a very interesting conversation. Even after you left, I got to speak to some of the teens and who are, you know, one teen was a sophomore in high school and she's very interested in local government. So, I definitely invited her to her council meeting and she was excited to be on the mayor's team council. So, thank you, Mayor, for keeping that committee alive. And last thing, I do wanna wish our community that's celebrating tonight, Happy Diwali, may the festival of lights bring, bring your, may the festival of lights brighten your life with happiness and success. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Welkowitz, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. The horrible events that happened over the past few weeks really, really were shocking to me and my family and I just wanna thank the mayor and some of our religious leaders in town as well for organizing some events that we could all share our pain and, and heal together. So, thank you for that. And thank you, Councilwoman Fine, for welcoming us back. I think I speak for Stephanie and Matt Hale as well. The three of us were on the same slate together. We all look forward to serving for another three years, so thank you for that. Thanks to Rebecca Hirsch, I won't take up too much time, just a couple of things because she, she really did a fine job on, on telling everybody about Main Street. Just wanna say, I'm really looking forward to our Shop Small Weekend, which is the weekend after Thanksgiving. I know, I know that there's going to be a lot of specials and discounts at all our local businesses and this is a great opportunity to get ahead of the gifting for the holiday season. Couple of other things coming up. On November 26th, our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee is hosting our second stakeholders' meeting in the planning of our townwide bicycle and pedestrian plan. This is in conjunction with our consultant's W S P. As a reminder, this is a Department, New Jersey Department of Transportation program to which we were accepted to improve a bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure townwide. I also wanted to say that our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee has just purchased an outdoor bicycle repair stand kit. Basically, it's a metal structure and we'll install it somewhere centrally and it holds a bunch of metal tools on it that, you know, you can, you can use, you could stop and, and repair your bike if you need it. It's got a bicycle pump as well and it's all outdoors and it's, I think it'll really help people as they ride through town and to have a place where they can actually repair their bike if they need. And Keep Middlesex Moving is our county transportation organization that works to improve transportation for all riders. They have a revamped emergency ride home program, allowing participants to choose the best way to get home if ride share arrangements hit a snag. So, here they're encouraging ride share carpooling. But those who are registered for this program may select mass transit, a taxi, rental car or car service, should they need an emergency ride home. A family emergency, unexpected overtime, or disabled carpool vehicle are acceptable reasons to call for a ride. Upon receipt of documentation, Keep Middlesex Moving will reimburse three valid trips per year, up to $50 per trip excluding gratuities. For complete information about the emergency ride home program or to register, go to www.kmm.org and we'll be posting this.
So, Councilwoman Welkowitz, can we get that information to Harry Glazer?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Yeah, I have one item I'd like to discuss. It came to my attention today that some of our residents, or most of us who get Valpak's or Penny Savers in the mail, may have received this notification. I don't know if Gary can zoom in on that. But it's essentially a notification from Middlesex County regarding how to recycle right. And this is something we've been basically poised to get out to residents and they got it out there in that format. So, I'm using the opportunity to bring it up. But essentially, you've probably read about recycling markets being dead, China's not buying our material, and there's a big struggle with what to do with recycling. And so, to essentially address that, the county's set up a protocol that we're also gonna follow in Highland Park, where, to boil it down, we're only looking to collect recyclables with the one or a two on the bottom. I meant to bring a bottle to point it out on, but we're all familiar with that triangle on the bottom with a one or a two. We will no longer be looking to collect three through seven. Be advised that the person, the facility that sorts the material will be just throwing it away. It's not like where you're, it's called wishful recycling. It will not get recycled, it'll get thrown out. So, we're trying to clean the stream to keep costs down for sorting. The other thing we will no longer be accepting is shredded paper material. They don't want it and we're trying to get it out of the stream, a material that's contaminated. We will be getting more word out to residents about this, but I know, I learned that this got out in the mail and I wanted everybody to know that yes, it does apply to Highland Park. Even though the county doesn't do our pickup, we are following the same protocols. More to come. It's very depressing for those of us who are environmentalists around here, which is a lot of us, but this is the reality we're dealing with until we figure out this recycling market. And that's a national and global problem. Thank you and sorry.
And I just want to add to what the Borough Administrator was saying. In, in an effort to be able to keep our recycling as strong and tedious as, as it was, we did have a meeting with the county's M C U A, I A, Middlesex County meeting with the county's MCUA, IA, Middlesex County Improvement Authority, to see if we could piggyback on their recycling program. But they are facing even more challenges than we are as a municipality. So, we, we are in a situation where we have to follow their guidelines and, and change the way we're used to doing things here. Okay. Councilman Hale, would you, did you have a report you wanted to give?
No, thank you. I apologize for being late. I was teaching tonight, and it's, normally I teach on Wednesday nights, and I couldn't figure out how to not teach tonight.
Okay, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right, I have a couple of things. First of all, as you know, PSCNG has been going around town, replacing the gas lines throughout town, and you've seen some of the streets that have been torn up a bit in order to get to the pipes. Several of you have written to me. I want you to know that they are not finished with their work. They will, in fact, be coming back to repave and finish the streets, and we anticipate that will all be completed by spring of 2019. I want to give a big thank you to the Middlesex County Chapter of the League of Women Voters, who worked with us to celebrate our first-time voters. That's the event that Councilwoman Kim Cho Han was talking about last night. It was wonderful. There were, I believe, 12 Highland Park High School students who were registered to vote for the first time, and we had speakers, we had a voting trivia contest, and Congressman Pallone actually stopped by to greet the first-time voters after the polls had closed. And then finally, as several people mentioned, our community was shaken by the horrific violent massacre of innocent lives, life, at the Squirrel Hill Synagogue less than two weeks ago, when worshippers were gunned down in the middle of their Sabbath prayers. Though the ugly hate that inspired that slaughter will forever be a reminder to us of the ugliness that humans can sink to, I was deeply touched by the outpouring of hope and love from various leaders and neighbors who turned out, and also from all of the faith-based communities within our town. Several of them and other neighbors turned out to share in the grief of the Jewish community at some of our synagogues in town. I want to give a special thank you to pastors Seth and Stephanie over at the Reformed Church of Highland Park for holding an outdoor vigil for the entire population of Highland Park on Monday night after the tragedy. As I drive around Highland Park and see the many lawn signs proudly displayed saying "Hate Has No Home Here," I'm reminded of how this community comes together when there is tragedy felt by one part of our population, and that is a beautiful thing. But, we must learn how to all come together, even when we don't have a loss to mourn. In this world of animosity and hostility, we must go high. Engage in debate and discussion, but not with hostility and anger. We must also all stay vigilant. That sadly is the world we live in today in America. When I called together a meeting of all of our houses of worship, our police and Homeland Security, and the prosecutor's office, right after the incident in Pittsburgh, we discussed steps that our houses of worship should be taking for security. But the most important message imparted by the Homeland Security people was, and you've heard it before, "If you see something odd, say something." So, I leave you with those same words tonight. If you see something, say something. Thank Any public discussion? Anyone coming up to speak? Please step up to the microphone. At this portion of public discussion, we're limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Calvin Chatlos. I actually live in Old Bridge. I am not a Highland Park resident. I'm an addiction psychiatrist in Direct Divockers Specialized Addiction Treatment Services, right across the bridge in Brunswick. I'm here, I was informed that New Jersey Ramp had presented something regarding the marijuana legislation and issues that may be confronting you in the next few months. I was suggested that I follow up, and I don't usually do this, but I have great respect for your community. I have friends that live here. I hear about this community from people that I, I see over on the other side. You're a very community. Just listening to this so far, you value education, you value family, you value cooperation, and it's very easy to see you're successful in this because you have religious and spiritual and ethical groups that come together. As a community, you value values, you value ethics, and you have a wonderful reputation. I have four quick points. I'm also a child and adolescent psychiatrist. There's no doubt that marijuana affects a person's brain, and we know that human brains don't stop developing rapidly until the age of 25. We know that marijuana affects brain development. About 10% of marijuana users develop a brain, marijuana disorder that increases to 17% for children using by age 15. Number two, I won't belabor the point, but marijuana does have some harmful effects. I actually have some booklets that I have prepared that you may use as resources. They are summaries of the scientific studies of effects of marijuana. So, if you want the facts, you can get them there, and you can look at them further. I won't even review them. You can look at them. Number three, often in the legalization of marijuana issue, money is part of the decision. How much towns really get is, has to be weighed against how, what are the consequences that towns are going to have to pay for in terms of accidents, injuries, medical problems, and social services that will not be financed by your budget. I finally have one graph to show you. I think you can even see it from over there. This is a graph of the perceived harmfulness of regular use of marijuana, which is in the orange, and the daily use of marijuana for the last 40 years. And it is very clear that if perceived risk is high, use is low. If perceived risk is low, use is high. My concern, from what I hear in terms of a decision that you are being faced with... No matter how we look at it, for whatever person's, the vote for legalizing recreational marijuana, in my opinion, is a vote to sell out our youth. But my concern in this case is a vote by a town council in any town of having a dispensary in your town sends a clear message to the town's beliefs about perceived harmfulness. And as I just showed, perceived harmfulness, if it's low, use is high. And it really comes down to how much you value your young people's brains, their education, their safety.
And, Doctor, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's the three-minute, you can come back later if you want, but I have to limit...
I will also offer my resources. If, as you develop the discussions about all of these issues, it's important to me, because I detete a lot of youth and I see some of the problems, you can reach me and I'll leave my name and phone number.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this point? Again, we're limited to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Boris, 367 Crowls Road. Yeah, so, I can speak something else. Just to his points, like the graph, I don't know, I'm not familiar with that graph, but in general, marijuana use has been pretty stable the past 50 years overall. So, I don't know what he's referring to specifically, but it's relatively stable. And in Colorado, they've had it legalized for a long time. They actually saw D3s as an adolescent use. So, side point. So, last week, or a couple of weeks ago, was the second public discourse in the public on the plastic bag ban. And frankly, it was very disappointing. And again, my point isn't to be super negative or to attack anyone, but I think when you're talking about a volunteer group that's trying to do really good things, that's awesome. When that transforms into them creating legislation, they are, should be held to the same levels of scrutiny and critical reasoning that any piece of legislation must be held to. When asked very basic questions about super simple facts of the degree of plastic use in Highland Park, the effects of that on the environment, any kind of economic impact, they had no answers. And they had a year and a $10,000 grant to do that. And when they can afford to spend $750 an intern to create a graphic and a logo, something that you can spend $50 on Fiverr.com, it shows that they weren't even trying to get real discourse from the totality of residents of Highland Park. When they're trying, just send it out on Mixo, and whoever responds, responds, that shows they don't really care about the perception of anything. I don't know if you got it. I sent you like a quick letter, just summarizing some points. I did this super quick math. It might be wrong. I think it's right. It's based on super pro, pro-plastic bag websites and their data that they received. And what it shows is that the effectiveness of a plastic, of a total plastic bag ban, based on the one fact that the Sustainable Highland Park had was 2 million bags used by Stop &amp; Shop and Rite Aid, would be a reduction of 11 bags in the ocean. That's the net benefit. 11 bags less in the ocean. Versus the perceived negative economic impacts of three separate ways, that would definitely play a factor. And again, this is a purely statistical point. Like, you know, we spoke about it last year. All evidence anecdotal. Do people shop in Highland Park? Do people shop outside of Highland Park? But if you just literally take, how many plastic bags should Highland Park residents use? They use less than half in Stop &amp; Shop and, and Rite Aid. Now, this might be the most reusable-friendly town in America, and they use literally less than half of plastic bags, but that's doubtful. So, what that means is more than half of people, more than half of their shopping is done outside of Highland Park. So, you could, again, as a base point, that should be a little bit scary when you're talking about a plastic bag ban, where East Brunswick and Edison does not have one, because they will just increase the level of shopping they're already doing there. And first of all, it won't actually save the 2 million bags, they'll just use them elsewhere. But what it will do is highly impact the Highland Park downtown. So, with that in mind, would it be possible, especially given that New Jersey will be voting on this probably soon, given the election results and the kind of blue wave in New Jersey, and it's a lot of electorates are Democratic now, New Jersey will be voting on this very soon. And it's going to be a double impact on small businesses, because they'll have to go in accordance to your regulations, and then mere months after, change everything to be in accordance with New Jersey new regulations. That's going to be really hard for small businesses to do both. So, with that in mind, is it possible for the, for the council to just postpone the vote until after New Jersey decides to vote on it?
So, Boris, let me address a couple of things. First of all, we're, we're not ready to vote on it. It's actually a discussion item for us, I think, on the conference agenda later today?
No, the 4th.
Oh, 4th of December. So, so just, just know that. The other thing is, the Borough Administrator, Council President, George, myself, and Tina Weishaus, who is the Chair of Sustainable, did have, we went down to see Senator Greenstein, I think I may have mentioned this to you, down in her office. She's one of the sponsors of the state's legislation, and so we are talking with her and trying to see what we can do to influence what they're looking at as well, so that there wouldn't hopefully be too many changes between what the state is looking at and what we're looking at. So, I haven't, on council meeting days, we're all very busy getting ready for our council meetings, so I haven't had a chance to open up your email. I did see it come in. I'm sure you sent it to other people as well. We'll take a look at it and, and consider it with everything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abby. I live on Harper Street. I just wanted to say, I'm actually very frustrated to hear what was just said, because I didn't, I wasn't able to attend the second hearing, but I did watch it, and I felt like the specific questions that, you know, Boris, I believe your name is, you're referring to are unanswerable, and the people did make a significant effort to answer the questions. And I think that Sustainable Highland Park put a lot of effort into this, reached out to the community. As a member of the community, I saw a ton of outreach about this. So, just since they're not here to defend themselves, I wanted to say that I think that that is not an accurate statement. I'm not trying to not talk to you, so. But I just wanted to come and kind of say, you know, I know that a lot, I'm not on Sustainable Highland Park, but I keep an eye on a lot of stuff that's going on in town, and I know there was a lot of outreach. There was a lot more than just a graphic that was put into it. There was research. There was a survey. I don't need to tell you guys, but I think that some of what was just said was quite unfair, and the questions that were asked at that. First of all, there was a ton of support at both of the open sessions, and some of the questions that were asked are, in my opinion, questions about what the total impact in every way, not quantifiable. And there was a little bit of unfairness in that. So, I just, since they're not here to say anything, I wanted to put that out there. So, we can talk separately as well.
Thank you.
Oh, just, they are, they are one of the five.
Right, okay.
Hi, everybody. Dan Stern, Cardinal, Harper Street, back for our, every other week discussion of legal cannabis. So, first thing, I just have a couple of very quick points to make first, is that while it's true that there are costs associated with cannabis use and legal cannabis, on net, it is a public health benefit compared to a non-legal cannabis regime. There are a few specific reasons for that, and I'm just going to address a few of the specific points that are made. First, traffic accidents. There's no data to suggest that legal cannabis increases the rate of fatal traffic accidents. Two weeks ago, we talked about data specifically from the Colorado DOT that put that argument to rest absolutely conclusively. There is also a very strong substitution effect with alcohol use. There was a piece last year in the Washington Post that ran down the data for this, that showed even with, even just with medical cannabis, you have a significant decrease in alcohol consumption. And you actually see evidence of this, because who are some of the biggest lobbyists against cannabis legalization? It's the alcohol industry. Now, in terms of social costs, alcohol use is far costlier than cannabis use. There are costs to both. The costs for alcohol are much higher. So, if you substitute one for the other, that is a net decrease in the harms that use of these substances are Next is the argument that, well, if you have a dispensary that sends a message that this kind of thing is a lower risk, and therefore is going to be used more frequently. There's no evidence that that kind of thing works when it comes to drug use. For example, we don't have good data with cannabis dispensaries, at least not to my knowledge, but we do have strong evidence to that question with regard to needle exchange programs and safe injection sites, which significantly decrease the perceived risk of use of intravenous drugs, but don't lead to an increase in the use of those drugs where those programs are available. And we have some really nice natural experiments where demographically similar cities, one city has instituted those things, the other city hasn't, and haven't seen an increase in use in the cities with those programs. And then the last thing is just the big, kind of overarching point, is we're not going to get to make a decision as a municipality about whether we're going to have to deal with the costs of legal cannabis. That's a state decision, and we all know how that decision is going to go. So, we're going to have to deal with the costs one way or the other, whether people have to go to New Brunswick or Edison to get it, or they can get it right here. The only question that's going to ultimately face Highland Park is whether we also get some of the benefits associated with that legal market once it is in place. And the obvious answer to that question, just the cost of the cost and the benefits, it's the cost and the benefits. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks.
Any other public comment?
Herb Gross, Adelaide Gardens, Highland Park. I'd like to address my remarks to the gentleman that was up here talking about marijuana. Every person that comes in here has their own opinion, and I respect their opinion. But every person that comes up here... But every person that comes up here and starts talking about marijuana, and this gentleman had some very good points, every person fails to make reference to all the people that have been incarcerated over the years. The men and women that are serving prison terms for the use of marijuana, the college students, the boys and girls, they've been given prison terms, and they're serving their prison terms. The high school boys and girls, a lot of them have been sent to reform schools, put on probation. But every person that comes in here has some good points, and this gentleman had, had some very good points, but you fail to, to mention all these people, if you're gonna legalize marijuana, then I say that the justices of the United States Supreme Court has to make a ruling to free all these people that have been incarcerated falsely. You cannot legalize marijuana throughout the country and keep these people all locked up. This is not the American way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Any other public comment? All right, then we'll move on. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the water and sewer ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 328 Sewer and Water was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, an affidavit's a publication or on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
All right. Uh, may I have a motion to take up the, the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any public hearing on this? Seeing none? Uh, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, could you please report on advertising the property acquisition ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, authorizing pursuant to NJSA 40A, Callin 112-3, the acquisition of a portion of Block 22, Lot 6, on the Highland Park tax map, and appropriating the sum not to exceed $150,000 for said acquisition was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, an affidavit's a publication or on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Public hearing? Oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you. Public hearing? Seeing none? May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Motion to adopt? Okay. Second, whatever.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, could you please report on advertising the traffic ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 7 Traffic was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, an affidavit's a publication or on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion.
Second.
All right, any public hearing? Seeing none? May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to separate item number 22 from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. And now, may I have a motion to adopt the following stored items, numbers 14 through 21, and then numbers 23 to 25?
So moved.
Do I have a first and a second there?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
All right, now may I have a motion to, uh, adopt or reject item number 22? Resolution to approve bingo license.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
As Councilman Fine mentioned earlier today, I have the, um, oh, I'm, yeah, I have the honor to, uh, appoint Chris Rasmussen, uh, to the Ethics Board. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, the following members are being appointed to the planning board. Stephen Nolan, Paul Linares, Judy Shade-Monk, Jeff Pearlman as alternate number two. Okay. Um, we're ready for our second public discussion. Is there any open public comment?
Is it referenced what you said, it also referenced especially, because you are still debating this and you're going back and forth and speaking to the other councilmen deciding what to do with the plastic bag ban? I think, uh...
Oh, could you state your name and address again?
Sorry, Boris, 367 Crowls Road. So, I think, I think she had a, an interesting point about the data that was presented and whether or not it's possible to estimate Highland Park's specific figures. And the answer objectively is yes, and anytime this kind of plastic bag bans or taxes have been presented in large cities or larger municipalities, pretty large papers are always presented on this, of the specific, let's say, how much plastic is recycled, how many bags are used, multiplied by the average weight of a plastic bag, and that will be the estimated reduction in overall plastics in the town. Or, for instance, like I really briefly did, just, you Google it, how much plastic bags are used in the world total, in America? Of the, how many plastic bags end up in the ocean every single year? And you divide it, you create a, a rate at which plastic bags end up in the ocean per million or whatever. And when you do that, again, objectively, mathematically, statistically, you come up for 2 million bags, which sounds like a really big number and gets people really emotional, and I think that's a big part of this, people are emotional about this op, topic, and right, justifiably so, children's future, the environment, super important, right? Really, really important. But it's also super important when you're talking about science to remain objective to a certain amount. So, when dealing with this issue, I think it would have been really helpful for the Sustainable Highland Park to remain objective and talk about these types of things and do these types of analyses. For instance, like the poll that they went out, you know, I know she, you mentioned that you did get it, like, I'm not on Nixol, I think there's a lot of transient people that, a lot of people rent in Highland Park, a lot of people go to school, a lot of people aren't necessarily involved in, you know, local government. Those people don't have any say in that if you don't reach out to them. And the Sustainable Highland Park did not do anything to reach out to them, right? There was no effort to go door to door, give a sustainable bag with a flyer saying, hey, this is what we want to do, these are the potential ramifications, none of that was done. Paying $730 for an intern to do a logo, again, they might have gotten a really nice logo, you pay $10 to a college student, they could walk around Highland Park for 75 hours knocking on doors. I think you could reach every single Highland Park resident in that time and give them a pla, a thing, you give them a link to a poll and say, hey, please give us your opinion, we really want to know. I don't think there was an opinion of what your sho, of what shopping things are like. I don't think they asked people, hey, are you going to be more likely to go to shop right near New Brunswick if a plastic bag happens? Are you going to buy more things at Costco? Are you going to buy more things at Walmart? What is your effectiveness going to be? That was not asked, and those are objective things, objective facts that could have been asked, but have not been. So those are the types of things that really need to be questioned, um, in order to assess whether or not this will even be effective, right, in any capacity from an environmental perspective? And also, even if it will be invi, effective to a certain extent, what will the economic detriments be, and will they supersede the environmental benefits of Highland Park specifically? Because it is a unique perspective with a limited population and a limited economic opportunities. So, in your discussions with the council person or Sustainable Highland Park, because obviously they're having a direct role in this with, you know, on either side, um, it's important to keep these things in mind, and without these facts, these objective measures, I, I don't see how, how you can reasonably vote on something that has the potential to impact Highland Park economy, especially in a time when, for instance, Highland Park's, you know, real estate market is the only one registered as warm on Zillow, like, I'm looking at houses. So on Zillow, they have like this metric of warm, hot, cold, you know, is it a buyer's market, is it a seller's market? Every single township around Highland Park is very hot. Highland Park is warm, and it used to be cold. So, that's, that means something, there's a reason why it's like that, and everybody else is very hot, a, and I think it's important to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. So we, we have two more things to do afterwards in our, uh, working session, and also, um, I, uh, we may have some things to discuss in executive, so may I have first a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Do you want to specifically say exactly what you want to do?
You want a motion to, to approve this resolution to go into executive session?
Okay, so I'm being told that I need to, uh, have a motion to go into executive session. That's it, no resolution?
It is a resolution. A motion to adopt the resolution to go into executive session.
All right. We need to go into exec session. Uh, may I have a motion to, uh, go into executive?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, then I also need a motion to adjourn.
No, you need a roll call on that.
Okay.
On the executive session.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion to adjourn to the conference meeting as well? Which will follow the executive.
Second.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.